Valentine's Day meeting of the Garden Grove City Council. Good evening, everyone. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Tran.
Here.
Councilmember Dovin. Councilmember Klaufenstein.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Mayor Protem Bridigam.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here. May I ask Assistant City Manager Maria Stite to do the invocation, followed by Councilmember Joe Dovin to lead us in the pledge?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask everybody to please stand and prepare yourselves according to your faith. Dear Lord, we ask for your presence as we meet this evening to conduct business for our city government. Please enable us to make our decisions so that we may do what's best for all of the citizens of Garden Grove. In serving our community, may we also honor you. Amen.
Thank you, Maria. Please face the flag, hand on your heart. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if I may go just a little bit out of order, I'd like to pull Consent Item 3A forward first. This is adoption of a proclamation celebrating February as Black History Month. Can I get a motion?
I'll move it.
Second. Call the vote? All right. May I please...
Push your button.
Oh, you have to push your...
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Thank you. May I please ask Mr. Robert McDonald to please come forward?
Mayor Jones, Assistant City Manager Ms. Stipe would like to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Ms. Pomeroy. February as Black History Month. Whereas during the month of February, the nation celebrates the vast contributions of African Americans to our nation's history and identity. Black History Month is dedicated to recognize, designed to recognize and pay tribute to the contributions that African Americans made and continue to make to our countries, to our country and our nation's economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas in 2023, the national theme for Black History Month is Black Resistance: A Journey to Equality. Black resistance not only encompasses rebellions, protests, and uprisings, but also the beauty, love, pride, and joy of everyday living. Black joy lives in those who dare to love themselves, their families, and their communities. Black joy is the smiles and laughter of children, the courtships, love, marriage rituals, fellowships, foodways, and family pride. And whereas the 2023 theme emphasizes through education, religious institutions, businesses, the press, and organizations, black people created ways to serve and strengthen their communities while establishing safe spaces. And whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism, to honor diverse traditions, and to build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals. And whereas the city of Garden Grove is proud to be an inclusive community in which all individuals are respected and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions on a local, state, national, and global level. Now therefore be it proclaimed that February 2023 is Black History Month in Garden Grove, and all residents are encouraged to celebrate diversity and to work together to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all.
Faze for you?
Yeah, exactly. I got it down, though.
Thank you so much, sir.
We'd like to present you with a framed proclamation, and if we could ask you to come forward and take some pictures first, and then you can...
Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming.
Let me say that I deeply appreciate the proclamation and your thoughts for making this happen. The Black Chamber on the 24th of February, thanks to the Founding Fathers, will be the 39th anniversary. So we'll be celebrating our 39th anniversary this year and getting ready to kick off the 40th right after in 2024. But thank you. And as I was preparing, hopefully, to get a chance to say a few words, the... I wanted to give you a little history. And it includes Orange County, from a black history standpoint. We just came through a Dr. Martin Luther King's birthday. And I thought it would be really nice to tell this story. When President Ronald Reagan signed the document, the executive order, to make Dr. Martin Luther King a national holiday, Coretta Scott King was standing right next to him. Of the 50 states in the United States, the first state to make Dr. King's birthday a national and state holiday was the state of California. Of the 58 counties in the state of California, the first county that made Dr. Martin Luther King's birthday a national holiday, a state holiday, and a county holiday was Orange County. Harriet Wider made the motion, Ralph Clark seconded it, and it went 5-0. There's your black history for today. Thank you for this opportunity, okay?
Thank you so much. All right, we'll go back to presentations. Item 1A.
Item 1A is Community Spotlight in recognition of James Nguyen for being one of the 100 RISE Global Winners for 2022. And Ms. Stipe will read the Community Spotlight.
Thank you, Ms. Pomeroy. This evening, the Garden Grove City Council would like to recognize Garden Grove Unified School District student James Nguyen for being one of the 100 RISE Global Winners for 2022. Would James Nguyen please come forward to the podium? And James, you can stand right in the front here at the podium, and you have your choice. You can either face the city council, or you can turn around and face your fans and your camera there that way. So you can have your choice, and I'm going to say some really nice things. So a senior at La Quinta High School, James immigrated from Vietnam to the United States with his mother in 2019. Shortly after his arrival, James found out that his grandmother had cancer. After her passing, he felt devastated but was inspired to fully explore his passion for science. Last year, James developed a cancer-detecting toothbrush prototype that uses a microchip to detect cancer in saliva. James was named one of the 100 RISE Global Winners on Good Morning America from a pool of 120,000 students from over 170 countries who submitted their ideas. RISE is a global initiative that aims to identify promising young individuals ages 15 to 17 who are working to solve the world's most pressing problems. Founded in 2019, RISE works with dozens of global partners from schools to businesses to local governments in identifying and supporting young individuals in communities around the world. When asked about James, Garden Grove Board of Education trustee Bob Harden said, "We are impressed and inspired by the dedication and academic discipline James has demonstrated as he works towards his important goal of early cancer detection innovations." James is a wonderful representation of La Quinta High School and as a scholar who is well on his way to achieving lifelong success. In the two years leading up to James developing the cancer-detecting toothbrush prototype, he read everything he could about cancer, contacted experts in the field of cancer research, and wrote eight research papers about the topic. "Anybody who takes on a project like that, anybody who has a vision to see that that's even a possibility is somebody very special," said Stephen Dragholl, a biology teacher at La Quinta High School. Currently, James has provided, he's proved in the lab that his idea can work, and his next step is to build the toothbrush into more than a prototype. James is working with biotech startups to turn his dream into a reality. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present James Nguyen with a certificate ememento in recognition for developing a cancer-detecting toothbrush prototype and for being one of the 100 RISE Global Winners for 2022. Congratulations, James, and very, very well done.
Hello? I'm sorry. So... Oh, thank you. I honestly don't know what to say. So honestly, I've been on a lot of news after Good Morning America and Forbes. So the local Fox, NBC, ABC, CBS, LA Times, they all came and interviewed me, and so I've been telling the same story for like 16 times now. All right, let's just do it the 17 times. So the story has been told. So my grandma got glioblastoma seven months after I immigrated to the U.S. I was saddened and distressed because honestly, you can't do anything but witness your loved one just slowly dying away, because you can't do anything. So it was sad, but then channeling that grief into courage and then into scientific research, I just wanted to answer the questions of like, why is it that cancer is so deadly? And as the answer to my questions lead to more questions, I just found myself diving deeper and deeper into cancer research. And on my eighth cancer research paper, I discovered this chip that basically separates different types of cells. And so I connected that chip with the toothbrush in a very spontaneous way. There's no root or there's no forcing it. So it actually came back to a story with my cousin. So I have a cousin, I usually go to his house to play around. And then one day, he said, he joked, he came, he came up to me and he said, "Hey, look, you brush your teeth three times a day. Me, I brush my teeth once every three days." And so I don't know, for some reason, that joke just stuck in my head. And the idea just popped when, oh, what if I put the chip inside a toothbrush and then develop it so that the toothbrush can detect cancer? And so I realized that some of our most brilliant ideas comes when we're taking a shower, washing the dish, or just walking the dog. There's no forcing it. And yeah, thank you.
You're welcome, too, sure. Go ahead.
James? This is Joe Dovin. I'm a council member newly elected, and I'm so excited to have you come speak to us today. Thank you very much. It's more of our honor to recognize somebody like you, homegrown right here in La Quinta. And I'm also Vietnamese-American, and I embrace not just you as a person, but your ideas. It's wonderful. And I can see a very bright future where you will contribute much more. So please keep working on your ideas. And someday, you're going to be in front of a bigger and bigger forum, even the Nobel. So dream big, start small steps, and we're here to encourage and support you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, 1B.
Item 1B is Community Spotlight in recognition of Philip Nguyen for receiving the NSLYY Virtual Summer Intensive Scholarship from the U.S. Department of State, and Ms. Stipe will read the Community Spotlight.
Thank you, Ms. Pomeroy. So we'd like to ask Philip Nguyen to come forward, and thank you, Philip. You know just what to do after following James, so we'll just get with it. So Philip Nguyen is a junior at Bolso Grande High School. Philip is a first-generation Vietnamese-American. And last summer, Philip studied Chinese Mandarin for six weeks through the National Security Language Initiative Summer Intensive Program and competed with thousands of applicants from high schools across the United States to win a scholarship. NSLY-Y is a program through the United States Department of State's Bureau of Education and Cultural Affairs that fosters international cooperation. The program initiative is to increase the number of young Americans with the language skills and cultural knowledge necessary to advance international dialogue, promote economic prosperity and innovation worldwide, and contribute to national security. When asked how he would apply what he learned through the NSLYY program, Philip said, "I now seek to utilize my experience to serve as a hometown diplomat for Garden Grove and the rest of Orange County. I hope to connect local students, especially those from underrepresented Vietnamese-American communities, to critical language study opportunities like NSLY-Y. In the future, Philip hopes to have a fulfilling public service career by representing the United States as a foreign service officer. Although my professional interests may fluctuate over time, I will always be committed to creating a global impact through language study, citizen diplomacy, and other efforts to become a global citizen," said Philip. Currently, Philip serves as the UNICEF Club Secretary and helps raise awareness about global humanitarian issues that affect the lives of children around the world. He also serves the community as the Director of Partnership for the youth advocacy organization Gen Up and is one of 15 alumni representatives for the NSLYY Alumni Association, where he represents over 8,000 NSLYY alumni across the United States. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present Philip Nguyen with a certificate ememento in recognition for receiving the NSLYY scholarship from the United States Department of State. Congratulations, Philip, and also very, very well done.
Okay. So I originally prepared a speech, but now I feel obligated to throw it out and just speak from my heart. But yes, I am an alumni representative of the National Security Language Initiative for Youth. And this initiative, which is launched by the United States Department of State Bureau of Educational and Cultural Affairs, we're seeking to increase like the number of young Americans with language skills because after the tragic events of 9/11 and also the United States' increasing involvement in global affairs, we felt that it was important that more and more Americans receive essential language instruction in languages that are not as commonly studied, such as Arabic, Mandarin, Korean. And as a Vietnamese-American who's come from a family of immigrants, we often didn't have a lot of money growing up, and because of that, I didn't have the access to find teachers or classes that would help me be able to decide a language. And when I randomly discovered NISLY through a Google search one day, I decided that, nah, this is probably not for me. And then one year later, I am such a hypocrite. But after going through an application interview process and also going through like the rigorous process of learning Mandarin, I really developed a lot more resilience because of how difficult and soul-crushing language instruction is. For example, I recall during one of my classes, during one of my first days, I wanted to say "shuai," which is handsome in Mandarin, but I ended up saying "shuey," which means miserable. And experiences like these, these experiences, which actually ended up making me cry during a program one time, it actually made me build character. It made me become a really different person when I came out of the program. And I really wanted to give back to my community as a hometown diplomat, a citizen diplomat, because I feel like more and more people would benefit from this. I think they would benefit from the global exchange and immersion and language opportunities that NISLY and other State Department programs offer. And so I'm here today to say to my fellow neighbors, my friends, and the community that I think that people should find opportunities and resources to expand their global horizons. And I am here to help make it a reality. I'm here to help provide those resources. And I'm here to help bridge this city and connect it to the world in order to make our city a more diverse, beautiful, and culturally amazing city. So yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
This is Cindy Tran. We are so impressed with all your accomplishments. Wow, as you're speaking, the mayor and all the council members up here just smiled with a big smile. We are so proud of you, the homegrown in Garden Grove City. You just make us so happy. And so, you know, with you and Jim that said the story earlier, you guys will be the model for all the students to follow. So congratulations. At any time you're looking for a job at Diplomat, I think the mayor, the staff here could come up with something for you. So good luck and best wishes from us.
All right, thank you very much. Item 1C, SoCal Gas Update. Good luck following those two.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Yeah, it's going to be a little bit of a tougher one here. Looks to me that the city has a bright and young leadership coming out, so that's fantastic. So, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, Members of Council, Juan Gonzalez, SoCal Gas Public Affairs Manager. I am here to talk... Oh, before I initiate, first let me congratulate all the new incoming council members. Congratulations, and very happy to see familiar faces. Looking forward to working with all of you in areas of mutual interest. Purpose of my visit this evening is to speak to you regarding the high gas bills that have been in mind the last couple of months, and it's something that has been impacting your residents, our customers. We want to bring attention to that particular item. I think we have a PowerPoint? Behind me. I was looking over there. Thank you. Honorable Mayor and Ms. Mayor Protem, I'm here tonight to provide a SoCal gas bill update. I know this has been top of mind for many of our customers who have been receiving January bills that were higher than historically. Market prices for natural gas have dropped significantly for February when compared to prices seen in January. While prices in the western region have decreased from the prices seen in January, they remain high, higher than last year. And as you can see from our PowerPoint, people generally expected to pay $65 last year. This year went up to about $160. We've also seen situations where people were paying about $130 in the wintertime, and this year bills were about $315. The core procurement rate changes each month and reflects the prices SoCal Gas pays for natural gas for residential and business customers. SoCal Gas does not set the prices for natural gas. Instead, natural gas prices are determined by national and regional markets. SoCal Gas buys the natural gas in those markets on behalf of residential and small business customers, and the cost of buying that gas is billed to the customers with no markup, meaning SoCal Gas does not profit from the movement of gas, the purchase of natural gas. And part of it has been the widespread of not-normal temperatures. It's been cold all around, mostly around the country, and reduced interstate pipeline capacity to the west coast because of pipeline maintenance activities in the area of Texas, which has been restrictive to supplies. It's been one of the main areas. What we're looking to do, saving energy and money. So in order to help our customers look at reduction of their energy bills, we're providing information that, you know, they can do at home. Lowering their thermostat 3 to 5 degrees, help permitting, washing clothes in cold water, reducing temperature on water heater setting to 120 degrees, installing proper caulking and/or weather stripping that can save roughly 10 to 15% on heating and cooling bills, and limiting the use of non-essential natural gas appliances such as spas, pool heaters, and fireplaces. I do have good news to share. The California Public Utilities Commission approved an accelerated California climate credit for SoCal Gas customers in response to the unprecedented natural gas prices impacting the western United States. SoCal Gas residential customers will receive a credit, a one-time credit, about $50.77 in their February or March bill. And, you know, we're also looking at, you know, within our webpage, we're offering energy savings information where they can take a look at opportunities for them to be able to reduce some of their natural gas bills. Essentially, you can also go on and to our webpage at socalgas.com, and the first two areas that pop up relate to what do I need to do to look at my gas bill and what items that can be done internally to do that reduction. You're also able to look online where you can get a tax will provide you information of your gas usage taking place. Additionally, you know, eligible customers have the opportunity, and we understand that situations are very difficult right now with everything being so high that we can have a level payment plan. So if people are having issues, please contact us, and we'll work with you. You know, the last thing we want to do is put people in precarious positions. We want to be able to help. If you're having an issue not being able to pay your bill, please contact us. We'll work with you. We're not cutting anybody off. We continue to form several other ways to help income-qualified customers through our Bill Assistance and Forgiveness Program, Home Improvement Assistance, and Level Paying Programs. One of the additional items that I wanted to share is in relation to the gas company recently donated $1 million to Gas Assistance Fund, a program which helps income-qualified customers to pay their natural gas bills. And to learn more information, you can... And to learn more information, you can visit our www.socalgas.com/assistance. And lastly, there's additional programming available to all of our residents that you can take a look at, again, at our website, which is a California alternate rate for energy care, and it's all based on how much money and income is coming into the home. Based on your, the income coming in, you're able to qualify for some of these programs. The Energy Savings Assistant Program, which provides, again, eligible customers to have the opportunity to save money through professional home improvements at no cost. We can go do those activities at home. Medical baseline, if you're having issue because of health items, you can apply for additional natural gas to be served to your location at a lower rate and a much higher amount of natural gas, again, at a lower rate. And again, as mentioned, the Gas Assistance Funds where people, depending on how much money they make and their opportunity, where you provide them about $100 bill reduction on their, on their natural gas bill. And again, primarily looking to inform and provide information. I'll leave my card here with the city manager. If any issues do come up, we're here to help. We understand the situation. Again, we're not cutting anybody off from their natural gas bill. We understand the situation. But again, if we don't hear from you, we won't know. So, if there's any issues, please reach out and communicate this with us. So, with that, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Potem, Members of Council.
Thank you. Please, go ahead.
Just one question because I think it might have come up. I'm not sure if one of our constituents did mention it, but they saw a jump in their gas bill. And some people are on automatic payment so that they've...
Automatically withdraws from whatever, yeah.
Yeah, and they were kind of shocked because it was, it went from, it went like at least five times more than the regular bill. And I don't know how you explain that or what kind of recourse can they go back and put in for some sort of relief for that? Or at least to give them a good explanation, because sometimes they come to the city and we don't have a good answer for them.
Understood. One of the items that could be done, again, if there's that particular resident, if you can please share my contact information, happy to work with them. Let me take a look at that particular item again. If you have individuals who have automatic withdrawal, obviously if their bill is usually $60 and it went to $100, $200, I can clearly know, you know, understand that's gonna be, take a burden on their monthly expenses. Let me take a look. I don't have a particular answer for that in terms of what we're doing, how that was managed, but I can be more than happy to research that and get back to you on that. And if that particular customer, provide them my information, happy to help.
Yeah, if you could leave some business cards, I'll pass along, because I did promise them to look into it.
Absolutely. Happy to do that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thanks, you too. Okay, next we'll go on to oral communications. We do have some cards. So, we'll open up oral communications. Andy in Aiden? Does that sound right? Yep.
Hi, guys. Good evening. My name is Ruby Garcia, and I'm the founder of the Andy and Aiden Safety Group, a newly-added 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We got approved during the holidays. And what our group does is we coordinate safety events with local law enforcement agencies for special needs families. As a parent with two autistic boys, I knew that there was a need for these safety events because I wasn't sure if my kids would ever learn to call 911 or cross the street or any type of safety items out in the community. So, we partnered with Garden Grove PD, along with Kelly Nguyen and her amazing team, to coordinate a safety event, and we had such a great outcome that we decided to apply for a 501(c)(3). In order to have these events, we have to produce visuals, you know, feed the families, bring reinforcers, prizes, and also participate in local special needs events to help promote our groups. In order to help raise funds, the Quanis Group of Greater Garden Grove is hosting a poker night on March 4th from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Quanis Land of Garden Grove. It's, you buy in $40 plus a bottle of wine valued at $25 and unlimited rebuys for the first hour at $20. I'll go ahead and leave the flyer for that. But also, on Monday, February 27th and 28th, Crimson Coward will be hosting a fundraiser all day, and if you bring this flyer or show them an image from our social media from Instagram under the Andy and Aiden Group, they'll give us 10% and give it to our nonprofit. And thank you for the owner, Sophia and Sayed, who's been such a great community member and always wanting to help all of the groups in Garden Grove, such as the PTAs and other schools. So, again, if you bring these flyers, they'll give us 10% towards our group, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Grace Lee?
Hi, good evening, Members of the Council. Just wanted to come here and say thank you for those that have met with us recently. George, I know we're going to meet up soon for coffee, so looking forward to that. John, thank you again for meeting with us. We hope to follow up with you soon. And Cindy and Joe, we appreciate your interest in expressing to me with us. We hope to meet with you soon as well, as well as you, Mayor Jones. And Stephanie, thank you again for meeting with us. We look forward to following up with you. And Kim, I know that we're scheduling right now, but hoping to meet with you as well. And thank you, Lisa, and your team, and Maria for meeting with us recently. It was good to learn more about the department and also the current situation. We appreciate that, and we'll continue to follow up. And we just wanted to share a little goodie with you, just because we know it's Valentine's Day. We're often with the community members a lot and also the youth and like to do fun and educational activities with them. So, we just made a little something and wanted to give you guys and also share with you as well, if I can pass this over. That glass is real clear. So, the backside is an example of an educational piece that we have. Hope you guys enjoy that. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Tran?
All right, does the clock start now? All right. Hi, everybody. My name is Teresa Chan. I am a Garden Grove resident for all my life. And I also work in a nonprofit called Waymakers, and we work with Garden Grove residents who are advocating for protection from secondhand smoke exposure. And also wanted to shout out to Scott Stiles for meeting us as well. We didn't want to forget you. And we're going to miss you, and thank you for meeting with us. You're such a great person. I'm so excited for your new adventure in the land of the desert. And so, everybody, I wanted to read a letter from one of our Garden Grove residents who aren't able to make it. Unfortunately, this person is currently in class, and so I'm reading on their behalf. This letter says, "Hello, Garden Grove City Council Members. My name is Leslie Gray Sue. I am a committee member of the City of Garden Grove. Unfortunately, I'm unable to attend the city council meeting today, but I wanted to share my experience to urge the importance and benefits of smoke-free multi-unit housing. I live in an apartment complex in Garden Grove that does not have a smoke-free policy. Because no policy is enforced, I often see people smoking outside and around the apartment complex. It's so disheartening to see the grass where children and pets frequently play also littered with cigarette butts. These kids are affected in ways they can see, in ways that we can see with cigarette butts in their play areas and ways that they cannot see with the exposure of secondhand smoke in their own homes. Exposure to tobacco smoke in apartments is a major health concern, especially those who live in affordable housing. Without a smoke-free policy, you're perpetrating a cycle of systemic racism. 83% of families who live in affordable housing in 2021 are minority populations. Because these families have less access to healthcare and proper nutrition, they are also more vulnerable to disease, increased health risks to chronic disease along with other stressors, affects their ability to work and puts their jobs at risk and financial stability at risk, and hence makes it difficult to rise from these situations. A lack of smoke-free policy in housing is a ploy to keeping the poor, poor. I urge you to prioritize the health of your constituents by protecting residents from the dangers of secondhand smoke in their homes. Smoke-free housing protects our most vulnerable people who live in concentrated housing, and it's important that upstream decisions are also made in collaboration with grassroots efforts to protect residents' health and to clearly show that the health of Garden Grove residents is a priority. Thank you for your time."
Thank you. Nicholas Dibs? Is he around? Yeah, I saw him too. Nick Dibs? Okay. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak who did not submit a card? Oh, please come again. Yeah, I saw you had two cards. I was wondering.
Hello again. So, aside from having our nonprofit, we also chartered a social group with Quanis of Garden Grove called the K Kids Club. And with the social club, you know, we intend on not only having fun and socializing and making friends, but also, you know, participate in serving our communities. So, maybe, you know, cleaning parks or making things for local nursing homes. And so, our first get-together will be this Thursday, the 16th, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. at West Grove Park. Grades kinder to sixth grade are welcome. And on that day, we plan on making paintings and also making goodie bags for the local nursing home. And, you know, from there, we'll decide on what our next community event is, but we'd like to open it up to any special needs kids. Grades kinder to sixth grade are welcome. If you're looking to make new friends, socialize, and serve our community, this would be a great opportunity for parents to get involved. You know, as a parent of special needs, there's very small groups like this, so I think it's super important to give an opportunity for the kids to not only feel like they're in charge, but also provide a purpose to this great city. So, I'll leave this flyer as well.
Thank you. All right, Nick Dibs?
Mayor Jones, Members of the Council, citizens of Garden Grove, my name is Nicholas Dibs. I'm gonna deviate a little bit from what I normally do. And I apologize to the families of Charles Mitchell and Rick Lurma for missing their memorial services. I knew both men, and I wanted to attend the service for Charles Mitchell, 82, who passed away around January 11th, and Rick Lurma, who passed away on January 25th, and the memorial was February 7th. And I apologize to his, the wife of each of them and the families for missing that, those events. And so, I'm dedicating my three minutes of time, and if I go over, I hope you'll allow me to do so because I think they need to, we need to pay tribute to them. Charles Mitchell was a friend. He stood here before you many times. He even left me a message on the phone. So, anyway, we're here on Valentine's Day, and both men love their city. They devoted their life to helping other people. They cared about people. Charles Mitchell ran twice for city council. He didn't win, but that didn't stop him from helping our community. Rick Lurma, you know, has an endless list of all the wonderful things he did for our city and helping others. And both men I had a chance to meet, and I am gonna miss both of them. Rick Lurma, there's never a good time to lose a loved one, and he was very young in my mind. He was only born in 1954. And so, to his family, to his friends, to his wife, I say, may his memory be eternal. May we continue the legacy of both men by serving humanity, by helping to make a world and our community a better place, and express the love that they had for other people, for helping the community, and the sincere love that, you know, is really representative of Valentine's Day, not just, not just a personal love, but a love from God, a love to the community. And in John 3:16, "For God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son, that whosoever believeth in him should not perish but have everlasting life." I pray that both men are in our heavenly, Father's heavenly kingdom, that they have eternal life, and that we continue their legacy in whatever form or forms we can do that to help make the world a better place. And a hymn I would like to read, and this is represented, I think, of both of them. "Behold, they stand in robes of white, who out of tribulation came; with songs of joy upon their heads they praise his holy name. Oh, these are they whose hearts are pure and free from sin or any stain. They stand before the throne of light, their joy shall never wane. They worship him in spirit new, God's messengers of love and life. They do his will; they speak his word that stills all pain and strife. They show an ever clearer light, like stars, they shall forever shine. They witness truly to his word, and God said, 'These are mine.'" Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will close oral communications and now recess to successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Member Brightigan? Member Brightigan? Member Tran?
Here.
Member Dovin?
Present.
Member Klumpenstein?
Here.
Vice Chair O'Neill?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
And Chair Jones?
Here.
Okay, we already did oral communications. Takes on to consent calendars, just receive and file the minutes from January 24th.
I'll move it.
Call the vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Any matters from agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn to Sanitary District.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Take it away, President O'Neill.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call the Garden Grove Sanitary District Board of Directors meeting to order. The clerk, could please call the roll?
Member Brightigan?
Here.
Member Dovin?
Present.
Member Klumpenstein?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Vice President Tran?
Here.
And President O'Neill?
Here. Thank you. At this time, we've done oral communications simultaneously with council. First item is consent. It's just receive and file the minutes. A motion?
Second.
Second. Please call for the vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Thank you. We do have one item tonight. I'll give it over to the city manager, I believe. You gonna start this off?
Yes. Councilman O'Neill and to the members of council. So, what we wanted to do is council members will remember that last year, we spent a lot of time working with Republic Services to negotiate an extension to our contract. We had a number of study sessions and reports. And at that time, the council said, after about six months, come back to us with a report and bring us up to speed on how things are going. So, that's what we would like to do today. We're gonna have with us a report by Republic Services. Our public works staff will be here, as well as our consultant, Haley Kunert, with our consulting firm. And so, they're going to not only share information with all of you, but it's a lot of good information that we want the community to be aware of too. So, with that, I will turn it over to Mark Gladney from our Public Works Department.
Thank you, Mr. Stiles. Mr. President of the Board and Board members, before we begin, there will be multiple presenters to tonight's presentation, so please bear with us as we change our seats around during the presentation. Joining us for the presentation tonight from Republic Services, we have Herman Hernandez, who is Republic General Manager for their Anaheim operation. We have Michael Johnson, who is the Government Affairs and Marketing Manager. We also have Kate Slence, who is our SB 1383 and Recycling Coordinator. As Mr. Stiles mentioned, we do have Haley Kunert with us from HF&amp;H Consultants, which is a California-based consulting firm, and myself. I'm the Senior Program Specialist with the Public Works Department, and I'm also acting as the Franchise Agreement Manager. With that, I would like to invite Mr. Hernandez forward to make some brief remarks.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council, City Staff. Happy Valentine's Day, everyone. I want to introduce myself. My name is Herman Hernandez, General Manager from Republic Services. I've been in the waste industry over 25 years. Started off actually as a dispatcher, supervisor out in the route, operations manager. Worked in places of Los Angeles, Imperial County, and now in Orange County. So, been with Republic Services now a little bit over nine years. My heart is with operations. Lot of changes coming along that I brought to Republic Services. First and foremost is really customer service. That's my pet peeve. Being in operations, making sure that we're able to service customers, put them first. That's my pet peeve, being in operations, making sure that we're able to service customers, put them first. You know, always have safety in mind, wanna make sure our constituents and our employees are always safety. Again, a lot of things that I really look for is really making sure that we deliver world-class service. So with that in mind, there's been a lot of changes since I've been here in October. And some of that has been, some been good attrition. And some of that attrition has been with people leaving that don't wanna fall in that category, and I'm okay with that. I'm big on graffiti. I have, I bought bags for all my employees that, that I forgot, I'm sorry, that we, I put in their spray cans in there, and I'm big with drivers. When they get to locations and they see graffiti, to cover that up. If it's something that's too big of, of a task, we exchange the containers. But again, any trash that spills out, they pick it up. If a cart is being serviced, that they pick that up. Those are the expectations, and those are the results. I'm bringing in some supervisors and dispatchers from other areas that are on board and are gonna be with us on this task. But again, I'm very excited to be here. I'm passionate about what I do. I'm passionate about leading the team, and I lead forward. I like to be out in the field. I love being out here. And then, Mr. Styles, just to give you some information you probably don't know. I know, good luck to you in Palm Springs. I live in Palm Springs. I stay there on the weekend, but during the week, I, I live here. But, um, so I'll be one of your constituents out there, but again. Yeah, so it is. But I'm very, again, I'm very excited. So anything you need, please feel forward, free to contact me. I'm, I'm direct, and I work with everyone here, so thank you.
All right, well, with that, I'm going to jump back in. So I'm Haley Coonert. I am the consultant, as Mark and Scott both mentioned. How do I switch it back to the podium? There we go, okay. So I, we just did our introductions. We're gonna go just into a little bit of background of why we needed to renegotiate the contract with the new legislative requirements. Mark's gonna do a dance, and we're gonna switch seats, and he's gonna come back in and give you that six-month contract review. And then Kate is, Schlence is going to provide us that looking ahead, and we'll open it up at the end for question and answers for anything that may come about. Wrong way. All right, so with that, we'll jump right into the background and legislative requirements that led us to where we are today. So a little history. We are currently working with an amended and restated franchise agreement between the Garden Grove Sanitary District, the city, and Republic Services. This was originally an agreement that went into place back in two thousand and ten. It had a fourteen-year term. So in two thousand and twenty-one, we began those negotiations for the new legislative programs and things, and again, brought the agreement to be approved by council through the negotiations in June of two thousand and twenty-two, with new program implementation beginning right away. Some of those benefits through the negotiation process included that required residential food scraps program that's already been up and running for a while, additional designated Republic staff to be out in the field and interacting with the community, getting that legislative compliance and a plan in place so we can hit those compliance targets, increased multifamily public education, a new multifamily bulky item program, as well as enhanced community cleanup service offerings. And I keep going the wrong way. My apologies. So I'll figure it out eventually. So the legislative history of how we got to where we are today started back in nineteen eighty-nine with the Integrated Waste Management Act, which set up the California Integrated Waste Management Board and set into play all of the recycling and disposal requirements that the state knows of the fifty percent requirement for diversion and, and, you know, keeping things out of landfill. Then moving forward, there's some other things that had happened in, in time. But we jumped to two thousand and twelve with Assembly Bill three forty-one, or the mandatory commercial recycling, which required generators, commercial generators and multifamily complexes that generated a certain amount of solid waste to have to have a general recycling program. Then moving right along to two thousand and sixteen, Assembly Bill eighteen twenty-six came along, which required mandatory commercial organics or food scrap, green waste, manure, things of that nature, recycling. Finally, we are where we are today in two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-two, last year. SB thirteen eighty-three went into effect, which is California's short-lived climate pollutant reduction strategy. And through this process, under Assembly Bill three forty-one and eighteen twenty-six, the state put the city under a formal plan with a two-year cycle for the city to report to CalRecycle, which was originally the Integrated Waste Management Board, through a formal plan to hit certain compliance dates and targets. So now, moving forward to two thousand and twenty-three today, we're taking that formal plan as well as the notice of intent to comply, which was submitted to the state to allow for additional time to implement SB thirteen eighty-three into a corrective action plan. So we're taking all those fun plans, combining them into one, and working that forward. We are also working with a slightly extended deadline of March first, two thousand and twenty-four, as opposed to the end of this year. So we have a little additional time now, and there's also the opportunity for additional extensions if we provide that supporting detail to CalRecycle to show what type of, you know, barrier we ran into as we implement programs such as a container supply shortage, things of that nature. So as long as we provide CalRecycle that supporting information, there's options for even further extensions. So with that, just a friendly reminder of everything that SB thirteen eighty-three requires. This is a hundred and eighty pages of regulations consolidated into one slide. So it's to provide yard waste, food waste, recycling service to all residents, businesses, or generators of waste as a whole. So if you generate waste, this is going to impact you in some way. The city and sanitary district board had to adopt a local ordinance enforcing the state law, and that was through the sanitary district code back in December of two thousand and twenty-one. They, we also have to conduct public education outreach and hit certain topics throughout the year. And each year, those targets and specific topics have to be hit. Establish an edible food recovery program for businesses. So this includes the city implementing a program through abound food care through the Republic Services contract, as well as implementing inspection and compliance programs and imposing penalties for noncompliance. So you may have received a robocall about someone who may be coming and flipping your lid to see what's going on in your container to make sure you're doing your recycling right. Those are requirements of the state mandate, and it is basically what is done to make sure everyone's using the containers right and making sure we're not having to pay additional processing fees to pull additional stuff out of what, what shouldn't be going into the landfill. So, understanding the impacts of SB thirteen eighty-three, everyone's impacted a little differently. Single-family residents are now putting their food in their green container, which is brown. Your green materials container, we'll call it that, your green materials container. So all of that goes into one great spot. Instead of having your trash get all stinky, it's all going into the one container. There's educational requirements, new outreach methods. There's kitchen pails, which we have up here available at the Republic Services office, and there's been some community meetings to help with folks learning about that program. Multifamily dwellings and commercial entities, there are also educational requirements. There are gonna be some new outreach methods throughout this year, such as letters and right sizing opportunities for multifamily dwellings and commercial. So through SB thirteen eighty-three, one of the requirements of the notice of intent to comply, as well as the compliance action plan, is to get the city into full compliance, which means any generator that needs a program is going to be rolled out a program throughout two thousand and twenty-three. And we'll touch more on that a little bit later. But I just wanted to note that that is one of these rolled-out methods and requirements of the mandate. So there's also staff and tenant training that's available to everyone. So through Republic Services and city staff and the city website, there's all this great material and outreach for everyone to look into and, and learn about the program. Finally, there is the opportunity for waivers of folks who meet a certain either de minimis amount of organics, which is a very small amount, or potential space constraints. If the containers that Republic has available do not meet this, that area or that location's necessary service level. So let's say you have a dumpster that a split container or something can't fit in. There is the possibility for a waiver. Finally, of course, city facilities and large events are also impacted. So the city is working to roll out indoor recycling and organic containers in all of the city departments and desks and areas, increase signage, and also working to implement edible food recovery at those large events that fall under the requirements of SB thirteen eighty-three. So with that, I will turn it back over to Mark to give the six-month contract review, and we'll, we'll do a little dance since it's Valentine's Day.
Thank you, Haley. As part of the amended and restated agreement, we have a lot of new and expanded service offerings. These include an annual shredding event, which is tentatively scheduled for fall of two thousand and twenty-three, a free sharp disposal program for diabetic testing supplies and insulin needles, an expansion of the bulky item pickup program to include mobile home parks, townhomes, condos, and apartment complexes. And the important thing with that program is it's per unit. They get three pickups per unit per year. Additionally, we, Republic has also included a battery collection and disposal, which will be rolled out at city facilities. We also are going to be expanding our bus stop trash can program, which will also be expanded to include the entrances and exits to the Medal of Honor Bike and Pedestrian Path. And Republic is actually going to assist city staff in the deployment of those containers, which were actually just delivered today. So those will be going out on the street relatively soon. Additionally, we have a proactive abandoned item pickup program, which was originally called the alleyway cleanup program, but we've actually expanded it. It's more than just alleyways. The proactive cleanup program operates five days a week and focuses on common dumping areas and hotspots within the public right-of-way, which includes streets, sidewalks, and alleyways. Since the program started in September of two thousand and twenty-two, the number of complaints of dumped items reported to Public Works in the public right-of-way has drastically reduced, showing the effectiveness of the program. Our next five slides are just before and after photos of the program. Part of, as Haley stated, part of our requirements under SB thirteen eighty-three is public education and outreach. Part of this public, part of the public, part of the public education and outreach is on Republic Services just as much as is on the city and the sanitary district. We've been working with Anna Polito and Veronica Avia in the city Office of Community Relations. They've been assisting us with a public education campaign. We've also been working with Cesar Gallo in the city's Information Technology Department on the development of a, of an organic recycling-specific website. I don't know if, if any of you have had an opportunity to look at it, but it's ggcity.org/organics. It's very, it's very well done. It's actually laid out, and there's four different tabs. There's a residential tab, a commercial tab, the multifamily tab, and I'm drawing a blank on the last tab. But there are, there are, it's broken down into different, how it affects the different services. Additionally, we have the Republic Services website that's dedicated to Garden Grove. And as Haley mentioned earlier, the use of robocalls. So when there are service changes or when there are service notifications, we are working with Republic to not only put those notifications in print, but also to do robocalls out to the community. A lot of the print material that the city is developing in conjunction with Republic is being translated into both, excuse me, Vietnamese, Korean, and Spanish. And we are using the use of QR codes on that document. So we are printing it in English with the QR codes that link to the different various languages. As part of our publication, public education and outreach, we've also conducted a series, two community meetings. We have a third one planned. We're working with the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association to schedule a third meeting. And at that meeting, the attendees of the meetings have actually been really receptive of the food waste diversion program. There, there hasn't been too much of a pushback from the, the individuals that, that were at those meetings. It was, they were actually very well attended. And then our last part of public education and outreach is to the business and multifamily community. We recently did a presentation with the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce, and we're in the process of doing publication, public education and outreach to various ethnic, ethnic organizations within the city. So additionally, with the contract, the city, excuse me, city staff, Republic, and our consultants meet on a monthly basis, where we talk about a variety of issues, some of those being the ongoing diversion tracking and our legislative compliance to make sure that we're in compliance with our NOIC, which is our notice of intent to comply. And pretty soon, our cap, our corrective action plan, which is where CalRecycle has basically said, okay, this is what we're expecting you guys to hit, and this is when you need to hit it by. Additionally, in calendar year two thousand and twenty-four will be our first contract audit, which will cover all activities in calendar year two thousand and twenty-three. An additional part of the Republic agreement also includes the city being able to review Republic's customer service complaint log. The combined commercial and residential complaint logs shows during a six-month period, the top two complaints were for issues with container exchanges and missed pickups. Republic did notify staff about supply chain issues in securing the new containers in the fall, so an increase in calls in this area was anticipated. And I'd also like to point out that this was not just a Republic Garden Grove issue. This was actually an industry-wide issue due to everybody trying to obtain compliant containers due to SB thirteen eighty-three. One of the things we haven't talked about is the SB thirteen eighty-three requires a changeover to statewide mandated colors. So that's, that's part of the reason for the new carts. Additionally, with missed pickups, some of the reported missed pickups may not have been missed, but were situations where residents stated, or they, they took their carts out after the service truck had already gone by, but it was still reported as, as a missed pickup. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Kate Schlence with Republic Services to take a look at what's coming up in two thousand and twenty-three and beyond.
Thank you so much, Mark, and good evening, everybody. Go ahead and jump right in. So I'm gonna be talking about the SB thirteen eighty-three auto enrollment that we are going to be rolling out to both commercial and multifamily properties. But in order to prepare for the district-wide auto enrollment, in December, we auto-enrolled thirty-one businesses as a pilot program. So these noncompliant businesses were, received both recycling and organic recycling carts as part of this pilot program. Thirty days prior to delivering the carts, we sent the businesses postcards briefly outlining the requirements of the law, what would be delivered to them as part of this auto enrollment, and of course, contact information to reach out to our staff with questions. So the delivery of these carts took place the week of December twelfth. And with the addition of these carts, all of these businesses are now in compliance with SB thirteen eighty-three. Currently, our recycling coordinators are in the process of following up with all of these businesses in order to offer continued support to them, as well as offer additional education about what materials go into what containers. So with that pilot program, we have formalized a program to auto-enroll the remaining noncompliant businesses district-wide. Upon evaluating the pilot program, we did make the recommendation to provide additional information about the program by providing each customer with a more thorough letter rather than a postcard. The letter will more outline the requirements of the law in addition to offer additional information about the services that will be added to the account, the, how the billing will be affected, their specific collection days, collection details, and of course, the contact information for our recycling coordinators to assist them with waiver requests or any other questions that they might have. Simultaneously with the auto-enrollment program, our recycling coordinators are going to be continuing to conducting site visits, calls and emails to property managers and property owners to help them into compliance, whether that means right sizing their business, adjusting their service levels, and then, of course, getting them the, the recycling containers that they need to be into compliance. Our plan is to complete this district-wide rollout by December two thousand and twenty-three. This will include approximately seventeen hundred commercial accounts and seven hundred and seventy multifamily properties for a total of around forty-five hundred carts. So we're very much looking forward to executing this plan and helping the sanitary district achieve their a hundred percent compliance with SB thirteen eighty-three. So to talk about kind of the fun events that we have coming up for two thousand and twenty-three, we've been working hard to coordinate some really great events for the customers of the sanitary district. Last weekend, we held our first neighborhood cleanup event in District Three, and it was a great success. We had between a hundred and a hundred and fifty vehicles drive through and drop off unwanted items that filled eight large roll-off dumpsters. So we're looking forward to holding the remaining five districts' events over the next several weeks. In addition, as Mark mentioned, In addition, as Mark mentioned, we are going to be hosting a community shredding event in the fall of this year. Our team has also begun the process of determining, determining an application process for awarding seven $1,000 scholarships to students from the Garden Grove Unified School District. And so we'll be excited to share some additional details about that with you guys soon. We also look forward to recognizing some environmentally conscious businesses through our environmental ambassador program. So look forward to hopefully presenting at a city council meeting soon. Additionally, we wanted to mention that the household hazardous waste program, Orange County has four collection sites to collect batteries, light bulbs, paints, any hazardous waste that residents might need to drop off. So we just wanted to highlight that those, those sites are available. Since the approval of the new contract, Republic Services has set up a Sharps mail-back program to create an easy and convenient way for sanitary district customers to properly dispose of diabetes testing materials and insulin and other used needles. So information for that is available through our customer service or on our website. The last thing that I would like to point out, Mark mentioned earlier, is we have expanded our free bulky item collection service to multifamily residents. Now, both single-family and multifamily residents can arrange for up to three free pickups per year and up to 10 items per pickup. So Republic Services is proud to partner with the Garden Grove Sanitary District. In addition to these events outlined above, we also look forward to sponsoring and participating in other city events throughout the year. We enjoy interacting with the Garden Grove residents and educating them on diversion activities, recycling tips, and of course, introducing the new recycling requirements required with SB 1383. Thank you for your time. I'm going to turn it back over to Mark to facilitate some questions and answers.
Thank you, Kate. That concludes our presentation for this evening. Staff, our consultant, and Republic Services is available to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Couple of questions. This, the new bulky item pickup for apartments and condos, and I think that was one of the key components that we all wanted to push because, quite frankly, we get a lot of younger people in apartments and maybe they just don't realize. But what kind of outreach is going out to these apartments? Because, you know, the complaints that I get still tend to be stuff dumped behind the apartment complexes. Or is there any mail going out to educate people? Hey, you don't have to do that anymore. Just give us a call. We'll come pick it up. And, and with that same question and the same topic, a couple of times, people have texted me photos of stuff that's outside an apartment complex, traditionally in the alley, but sometimes out on a sidewalk or something, out in front of an apartment complex. And then, you know, they're up, oh, these people are dumping their garbage and, you know. And then we find out, oh, the, the person did call Republic, and they told them to put it out there and pick it up. You know, I was thinking it would be kind of nice if there was some, something on the Republic website where they could just hit print and tape it on. And that way, the public knows, hey, this has already been called in. You know, this is an official pickup. We're putting it out here, you know, so there's fewer complaints, that kind of thing. But anyway, back to the outreach.
We are still in the process of doing the outreach to the multifamily complexes. A lot of that's going to be taking place as we do the auto enrollment of the multifamily complexes into the SB 1383 compliance, because we are going to be doing site visits and talking with those property managers to provide that education outreach to them. Republic is doing direct mail pieces to various groups, including single-family homes and multifamily homes. We do do quarterly newsletters, so we are working on getting the word out there. Additionally, with community, in working with Office of Community Relations, we are putting it out there also through social media postings.
Okay. And then secondly, the new, I guess they're called carts, garbage cans?
Bigger carts.
I know before they'd, they'd come through and try to switch out the garbage cans on us, and the whole neighborhood revolted because it's about 25% smaller capacity. Are these new carts going to be the same capacity? Or are they going to try to okie-dokus and put us in those little itty-bitty ones again?
I'm going to have Republic answer that question.
First, I want to say thank you for that idea, for printing out the bulky item, like a sheet or something for our website. I will definitely look into that and get that added to our website. I like that idea. As far as the carts are concerned, they're the same size. They're 95-gallon containers. And we're not switching them out all at once. It's going to be over time. We actually, through CalRecycle, have until January 1st, 2036. So it will just be as needed as you need a replacement cart, but they will be the same size, 95-gallon.
And I know sometimes I get requests, you know, people, usually elderly people living alone, they want the smaller ones, and that's fine.
Right, right.
I don't think anyone wants to be pushed into a smaller one when they got a family, a six or something.
Absolutely. So when this switch out happens, and Haley just told me per the contract, it's 2027. So sorry about that, a little sooner than we thought, but that's no problem. Once that happens, we'll use the same size that you have. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's all I have.
Yeah. So, yeah, more questions for staff, yes?
Thank you. My question is, under the outreach and education, the staff report, it talks about staff launched a recycling information hotline. Can you tell me a little bit more about that number? When it is called, who would they be speaking to? And if they brought up an issue that maybe wasn't exactly pinpointed to the recycling program, would you act as a liaison to maybe answer those Republic questions, or who would you forward them on to?
The hotline is actually a voicemail box, so individuals will call, leave a voicemail. We would return the phone call back. Most likely, it would be myself who's returning those phone calls. If there is a problem or an issue that we can take care of from the city sanitary district side, we would take care of that, including outreach to Republic if it's an ongoing Republic service issue.
More questions? Yes. Councilman Duin.
I have a suggestion and a question. So I'll start with a suggestion first because I bring out the trash in the family, I roll out the bins, and I pull them in. And it gets very busy on the street on trash pickup days. And then I get confused with the neighbors' bins. And some of the neighbors, they spray paint onto their bins their actual address number. And some people don't, and then they're taking my bin in, and then I'm taking their bin in. So my suggestion is, can we roll out these bins with addresses on them to each of the residents? This is a suggestion. If you can incorporate that in your bins.
Yeah, that's something we can definitely look into. That has been something that we've been addressing on the commercial end of things with the auto enrollment, because there are so many carts. We've been talking with our delivery team to go ahead and identify the carts by either address or by business name. So that's definitely something that we can look at as we start rolling out to the residential communities, especially when it's real compacted on where they all sit against the curb.
Yeah, please, if you could in some way identify, because then if I'm losing a bin, I can call in for replacement, and somebody took my bin, there's no way for me to track it down. So just some sort of identification would be good.
Yeah, we'll definitely look into that and see what we can do as far as that. Appreciate the suggestion.
Yeah. And the question is, do you work with private haulers? Are there other haulers, or is it just all Republic Service throughout the city?
Yes, it's, Republic is the franchise hauler for the Garden Grove Sanitary District. So it's just Republic Services.
Okay, so you don't pick, there's no other haulers in the city?
Correct.
Okay. The bulky items, I know you pick it up in the public right of way, but do you ever pick it up in private property, especially commercial property? Because there's a lot of dumping. People would go to a commercial location and try to dump their trash there.
Yeah.
So the bulky item per collection program for residential and also the alleyway cleanup or the abandoned item cleanup focuses mostly on the public property items as it is, as the, on private property. It is the private property owner's responsibility to manage and deal with their waste, which includes the items that are dumped on their property. However, the, those property owners can still reach out to Republic to have Republic pick those items up, but there would be an additional service charge for that.
Okay, yeah, at least they know that there is that service, and if they're willing to pay, it might help get that, those trash off their property. I mean, there, there are people who would just push it onto the right of way if they can't get it off of their private property.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? Yes. Councilmember Duin.
Thank you. A couple of comments and questions. First, as I, I'm excited and can't wait to be a guinea pig to see how you roll out the outreach and engagement for multifamily bulky item pickup. Michael, no cheating, you can't tell them where I live, so we can't rush that. I want to be on a normal timeline so I can report back to you fully how that goes. I have a spare garage filled with some items I'm ready for bulky pickup, so I will let you know how that goes. How do we know for sure that missed pickups, that 42% was a little high for me, that those calls are coming from instances in which maybe that person or that family or whoever put their reciprocals out after that trash was picked up? How are we verifying that that's actually the case and that Republic didn't actually miss the pickup?
So a lot of times, it's, you know, Republic trucks do have GPS on them. It's also just an industry thing that there, right now, there is an increase in missed pickup as the industry is sort of increasing all the services and rolling everything out. We're definitely monitoring it, but it really depends on the situation and the nuance of, was it residential? Was it commercial? Can we go back and look at the driver's records? Is there report of tips, but the drivers' trucks have it very, very well mapped out if they went by? It's a little bit easier to determine for a commercial entity as opposed to a residential. And sometimes they have, you know, a camera on the truck, and the driver actually has it tipping. So it really depends if it goes that far, then we start digging and asking for the supporting evidence.
Okay, thank you. One thing I would like for Republic to consider is, we all know, those of us who are politically active, that there's ways to send automated text messages to folks, that that's something you should consider when you're having a specific area that's going to have a delay or a missed pickup, or that you're getting calls for a specific neighborhood area, mobile home park apartments, that in, like, if more than one person is calling about a missed pickup, that should flag in your system, and you should be able to send out an automated message so that folks are aware of that. There's ways to have that, those phone numbers and that information. It would be really helpful, rather than having 50 different people call me about a missed pickup because I have no control over it. So if Republic could get better about disseminating that information in real time to let folks know, if there's holidays, I know that the city is really good about posting on social media, hey, there's going to be a delay, but the city also posts like 50 times a day, and things get lost, and people don't read every single thing. So sometimes people don't realize that because there's a holiday, there's going to be a delay in pickup.
Absolutely. And as you stated, we are really good about stating when there are trash service delays. Also, in the winter quarterly newsletter that was sent out, it also has in the, on the back page of the newsletter, the days where trash service will be delayed due to holidays. But as far as notifying the residents or the commercial businesses, Republic does have the technology in place to do robocalls to commercial businesses. And I've been working with them to get more information on implementing something for residential routes. Residential routing is just a little bit more complicated to get something like that instituted since there are multiple service trucks that service those routes.
You can do it by zip code, and I would recommend looking into text messaging instead of robocalls because if I'm getting a robocall and it comes off as spam, I'm not answering it. And then there's oftentimes not a voicemail. So for those of us that are more inclined to look at a text quickly, that, I just think it's something that you should look into. And there's ways to send out those messages based on zip code or however, I mean, there's multiple ways. I'm not the expert, but you can filter down to specific areas. And if, you know, some folks get it and they weren't part of a delay or a missed, that's fine. I'd rather have it go out wider than not go out at all and have people upset. And I just want to make sure that we are critical, the city is being very critical and really looking into those missed pickups. I don't want folks to be charged for a missed pickup or an extra pickup if it really was a miss on Republic's end. So let's make sure that we are being very, a lot of controls and checks are in that process. I, I've heard a couple of complaints, and I want to make sure that that doesn't continue to happen.
Part of what I'm doing with my job within Public Works is documenting, documenting and tracking those complaints and working with Republic to find the root cause of why the issues are continual, ongoing.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Councilwoman Duin reminded me of something I wanted to follow up. And I am concerned about the high percentage of missed pickups also. But what's confusing for me is I don't know the pickup route and what time to put my trash out. I mean, yeah, generally speaking, you want it out there by nine, but then I don't know when they come by. It can come by at 11:00, it can come by at 2:00 PM. If we can have a more accurate window that we can let our residents know that that's when the recycling pickup is going to happen, that's when the trash pickup is going to happen, that's when the organics pickup going to happen, because they don't necessarily happen all at the same time, please.
Yeah, it's, it's 7:00 AM. Everyone in the city should have their cans out by 7:00 AM. And I only know that because sometimes those drivers like to get a little excited, and they get a little, they get by at 6:30 or 6:45, and I'm, I'm a guy that takes my trash out in the morning, usually about 6:45 or 7:00. And the driver, I can hear the truck coming, and I, you know, run out there, do it. But, yeah, maybe you can elaborate on that.
You're right. Typically, it's the night before, right? Because although we do have routes that are scheduled, we are mapping. I, I did want to touch a little bit on the, on the missed pickups. Actually, Republic has a new program called Rise. We use, what that is, their tablet. So before, the drivers would have, back in the day, route sheets. That, that went away, so we have an app called Track My Truck. So the routes are sequenced, so you as a business owner would know where the truck's at, what time it'll be there. Well, we're happy to say that we're now implementing that starting in April. It's something new for residential. So as a resident owner, you can actually go on an app and see where the trucks at. It's a little map, and you see where it's at. But one of the things that we did was we're building out our maps to address that. So for example, if we're servicing your block between, it's always a time period, right? Not always exactly, but maybe a two-hour period, 7:00 to 9:00, you, it doesn't matter if who runs a route, spare driver, relief driver, drivers on vacation, we'll always be around that timeframe, so. Didn't want to touch that, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for bringing up that app, because I was totally going to point out to, like, delivery systems like Amazon, FedEx, UPS, they have that ability for you to track where it is, and even the map. I think Amazon drills down to exactly where they are, like, how many pickups away. So, thank you for.
Yeah, thank you. And I believe, member Tran, you had something?
Yes, just a quick note. So thank you so much for having, doing a great job over the weekend. I was excited with District 3 was selected first, and I reached out to family, friend, and everybody. Just remind them, a contender and 12 pilots, that's a lot. And the first step to comply with the SB 1383, but also a right way to get rid of unwanted items. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'll just say, I guess while we're still here, the next cleanup is in District 2 at Skylark School, and that's on the 25th. It's a Saturday, February 25th, just to keep, check your website. And I wanted to thank everyone here for all the diligent work you've done, the comprehensive report that you did, the collaborative effort it takes to put this together. I mean, it's obvious that you guys have done a lot of work on this, and we up here as the board members really appreciate that. So thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for the comprehensive report. With that, we will move on, and we are going to go to adjournment until the next regular sanitary district meeting Tuesday, February 28th. Thank you. Back to council.
All right, thank you. We shall reconvene. City Council takes us on to consent calendar. We already did 3A, so it's recommended that 3B through 3G be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull a night. Call to vote?
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All right, Commission Committee Matters, 4A. I'm going to ask that we continue this again to another, to a future meeting.
Vote, or do we need to?
Do we even need a motion, or we just kind of give direction?
Can I make a comment?
Go ahead.
This is the second time we've moved it, and I'm okay with it. But I want the mayor to make a commitment that we'll vote on it on a given, maybe the next meeting.
I would push back and say until we have sufficient diversity in our applicants that I will not be supporting moving forward with, with appointments.
How long of a window are you suggesting?
Until it takes me getting more than two District 6 residents. And last I checked, there wasn't anyone from District 4 either. So until we have representatives from each district, I don't think we should move forward with appointments, whether that means that staff needs to beef up their efforts. I have some comments for that later during matters, but we, this is unacceptable. We need to do a huge overhaul and get more folks to apply for these positions. We should not be having an influx of District 1, 2, and 5. There should be diversity among our appointments. I didn't make it an issue before, because we don't do appointments by district. We allow. allow everyone to apply and we make recommendations and the mayor makes those appointments, but it's really difficult, um, when there isn't a reserved specific spot for each district to ensure that we have that diversity on those, those commissions.
And I agree with, uh, Councilwoman Nguyen on that. My, my, uh, only elaboration is city business still needs to get done, and those commissions do need to get filled, um, so, you know, we can't drag our feet forever just waiting for, you know, trying to get people to volunteer to work for free is tough, and not everybody wants to do that, so, um, with that being said.
Current commissioners continue to operate until we make new appointments, isn't that correct? So city business is still being handled, and if we need to incentivize and start adding twenty-five dollars per meeting or whatever it is, and that's a discussion we need to have, um, but what we currently have presented to us is unacceptable and we need to do a better job, all of us. I know that I constantly email the city clerk and the city manager to ask for posts to be made on social media, but that's not enough, um, so.
I would just say, you know, let's get it right, let's take a little more time, get it right, and, uh, you know, it, it, these are serious positions that we need to consider, and, and we're going to get there, we just need to all hunker down the next couple of weeks, take a look at the list. You know, we've had a lot of business going on, a lot of things happening in the city, uh, we've got, uh, good people on the current, uh, um, commission, so I don't want to rush it, I want to make sure we get it right, so.
I, I'm going to weigh in on that a little bit, because, uh, I'm all for diversity, uh, I want to give it more time, but I'm not going to ha, agree to an open-ended timeline, no. So we'll visit this again in the next meeting.
All right, thank you, uh, items for consideration, five A.
Item five A is to receive and file the annual financial reports and auditor's communication related to fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two annual audit, and approve additional appropriation for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, and Ms. Song is here to give that report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, good evening, Honorable Mayor and the members of the City Council. It is my pleasure to present to you our annual financial statement that's been audited for fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, and, um, yeah, the slide is pulling up right now. Well, first of all, uh, we received a clean opinion from our independent auditor. A clean opinion means that at the conclusion of the audit, the auditor certifies that our financial statements were presented accurately, and the reports were compliant with the accounting principles and the government accounting standard, uh, standard board requirements. So for fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, our overall financial condition, both governmental activities and enterprise activities, which includes the utilities, had a improved, had improved by over seventy million, there we go, all right. The general fund, the primary, is the primary operating funds for the city, saw a surplus of nearly fifty million. The primary driver of the positive operating result was the growth in tax revenues. For example, hotel taxes enjoyed a seventeen million increase comparing to the previous fiscal year. Total hotel visitors' tax came to twenty-three million for the year and is just about two million shy from our pre-pandemic peak. With the help of the strong consumer spending as well as high inflation, sales tax increased by ten million from twenty-twenty-one. Measure O alone brought in about twenty-nine million for the year. Property tax remained the largest revenue source for the general fund and reported sixty million, this was the steady, it, it, this was a steady increase of eight percent from the last year. On the expenditure side, public safety expenses continued to occupy over seventy percent of total general fund spending, as a reflection of the City Council's emphasis on responsible financial management. Overall, general fund expenditures for the year totaled about a hundred and thirty-four million, which was just a little over four percent, uh, from the last year, lower than the average inflation rate for the, uh, same period. It's worth to mention that our, out of the total surplus of forty-nine million, seventy-six percent was committed to the current fiscal year, uh, to complete planned capital improvement projects such as the Civic Center Public Safety Facility and the Pavement Management Acceleration Program. Additionally, we earmarked about eight mil, eight million last June when amending our twenty-two, twenty-three budget to increase our stabilization reserve and create a building and facilities rehab fund, um, as well as replen, replenishing the, uh, workers' compensation fund by about two million dollars. So part of the remaining four million will be, um, programmed in the, uh, for the new initiatives identified during our upcoming biannual budget process, as well as funding for the three items that requires additional funding for this current year. So those three items that requires additional funding includes the tenant improvement and space study for the Purcell Building. The building was acquired in October last year as part of the strategic plan for the Civic Center project. Also, the twenty-twenty-two general election cost increased due to legislative changes on voting center configurations and voting processes. Lastly, the newly acquired cloud-based data hosting services requires about additional twenty-four thousand in funding. So the recommended actions for the City Council is to receive and file auditor's reports and communications. Once approved, we will be publishing our audited financials on our city's website, and that website is, uh, it's, it's presented on the previous, um, slides, on the bottom, yeah, um, left side of the slide over here. So, um, next, I'm going to provide a quick mid-year update on how we are doing financially for the current year. So there are lots of discussion on possible recession, assault landing, and continued tightening of monetary policies at the federal level. So far, our revenue estimates are holding strong. Based on an update provided by our revenue consultant, sales tax is expected to exceed the budgeted amount by about two million. Property tax will be about the same with a minor downward adjustment due to the overall slowing down in the real estate market. With the federal rates, uh, Fed rates continue to rise, home buying power will be negatively impacted as the cost of borrowing increases. In the past year, the positive variance between, uh, the actual property tax received versus what we have budgeted was primarily due to the assessment of the supplemental tax that only happens when you have a changed ownership. So of course, with lowering, um, lowered, uh, borrowing power and this particular revenue segment is going to, uh, see a little bit of a reduction in the upcoming year. Now, hotel tax, um, on the other hand, has seen some strong performances. Out of the six months of the current fiscal year, six month, uh, four months had surpassed the pre-pandemic peak, so we are hopeful to see a positive operating result for, uh, from the tourism industry. On the expense front, we are right on target at the six-month mark. Staff will continue focus on efficiency and cost containment throughout the year. So I also want to update you on the, uh, give you a quick update on our biannual budget process for fiscal years twenty-twenty-three through twenty-twenty-five. We had our kickoff meeting, meeting in January. We, uh, continue to apply our general approach to, uh, of the baseline budgeting. Need assessments will be done through the supplemental request process. Some of the operational changes were discussed with department personnel, uh, to ensure smooth budget development. Our focus is to ensure a transparent, fair, and comprehensive funding priority evaluation process across all city departments. In March, we'll have our council retreat, and we look forward to the priorities established by, um, the City Council and will incorporate them into our biannual budget process. And in May, we will present a, um, proposed budget to the City Council and the public. So this concludes my presentation, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Patricia, any questions or comments?
Yeah. First, uh, first off, kudos on an outstanding report and, you know, it's all, and for all city staff really, to, you know, to come in under budget like this and to have a reserve, I mean, that's a testament to, uh, the totality of city staff. Yeah, you know, some, yeah, some funding sources come in a little higher and, you know, but, uh, quite frankly, everyone's running within their budgets or even under, and, uh, doing a great job. With that being said, I, I'm, I'm always, you know, curious when I see, I can't get this, oh, there we go, um, whenever I see it, um, a surplus, you, you know, traditionally, everybody comes running in and let's grab it, let's, you know, everybody wants to get their hands on that to, for this, and, and, and they're all great reasons, but I always like to see, you know, the big monkey on everyone's back is the pension liability thing, um, and, uh, what we're doing, if we have surplus years, we should be, in my opinion, earmarking some funding for that, uh, in those surplus years. So with that being said, are we looking at that in this totality picture of surplus?
Councilman Bredegum, uh, I might ask Ms. Song to chime in, uh, after that. One of the important things that I think will be really important in the, um, in the council retreat, priorities coming up, is to have that discussion about, you know, how you want to, how you might want to spend any surplus. Obviously, we're doing the one fifteen trust right now where we prepay our retirement obligations upfront, saves us about eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars a year, and then that goes into the one fifteen trust, which is now about in our, in its third year now, so we're, we're setting some side, uh, some money aside that way. Council's also approved your pension reserve fund policies, which have been really important to help guide, you know, our budget planning and making sure that we hit all of those reserve fund guidelines that you've given to us over the years. And then, um, you know, to the extent that there are, uh, surpluses and, and things that we can put the money aside, you know, I think we could have a good, uh, robust discussion with the finance director about that in the council retreat. Uh, one of the really nice things about having the surplus that we have is we're also thinking down the road about this, a pretty significantly large public safety building, uh, that we're going to be building in the next, uh, uh, year or two. So I, um, I, my sense is we're striking a good balance, but, uh, we're not as well-funded in the pension as some other cities are, so to your, your point is well-made and something we should really be thinking about, and I think, uh, it, it should be a good, uh, a good, important discussion in the retreat that we have in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, it's not always a pretty thing, because let's face it, it's not glorious, there's no monuments to pension liability, there's no new streets being paved, the public doesn't really see it, but it, it is something we need to be serious about, you know? I'm sorry, did I interrupt you, Patricia?
Oh, no, no, yeah, well said, yeah, that is the plan, we always evaluate all the obligations first, we want to make sure that we have our liabilities taken care of before we make new investments, and also for the new investment, we also want to make sure we have continued funding sources to maintain and improve. And we also not given up the, um, the idea of the pension obligation bonds, we have the validation process successfully completed, um, so it's, when markets right, it's always an option for us to consider.
But since we were talking about finances and, and unfunded liability, I just wanted to report a little bit on OCFA, so as your representative there, they're doing very well on budget and finance, and, you know, the fire department for us was over twenty percent of our budget, and it still is, but by contracting with the OCFA, our projected unfunded liability for over twenty percent of our budget is going to be fully, uh, we have no unfunded liability by twenty-twenty-seven, and so we're doing good on a paydown, which we should do here too, but by moving there, we've, my, my focus there was to make sure that continues to happen, we continue to have a low increase in any cost per year, we had that maximum of four and a half, we came in a couple of years at like one and a half percent, uh, under two percent. The last year, it might have been close to the maximum, but that was a lot of COVID-related things there. So that, there, I'm very conscious about us being a, um, you know, um, contract city other than a structural city, but there's a good blend on that board to make sure that both parties are being treated evenly, right? Structural cities getting, getting their, their money from, um, their tax base, their property taxes, whereas we pay a contract. So anyway, we're doing well over there, and I just wanted to mention that, you know, twenty percent of our budget when we moved in two thousand and nineteen to OCFA is now looking at zero unfunded liability by, in a few years, which is great, great news. So, but we can do something like that in Garden Grove too, I think, moving forward.
Any other questions or comments? All right, this is a receive and file, but it's an action item, so can I get a motion to receive and file? Call to vote?
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, thank you, Patricia. Item five B.
Item five B is adoption of a resolution to authorize participation in the encampment resolution funding grant program, and Ms. Lee is here to give the report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ms. Kim is here to give the report. Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. The item before you this evening is a request to approve a resolution for us to participate in a grant program called the Encampment Resolution Grant. By way of background, a notice of funding availability, or dubbed NOFA, was issued in early December for the encampment resolution funding program, and it's administered by the California Interagency Council of Homelessness. So there was round one funding that was, um, issued and awarded approximately forty-eight million dollars to nineteen jurisdictions last October. The funding cycle, um, that we're applying for is around two, and there's approximately two hundred and seventy-three million dollars available for, um, competition and competitive grant applications. The goal of this grant is to connect individuals experiencing homelessness in encampments and to transition these individuals to interim shelter and ultimately to permanent supportive housing. The Garden Grove, uh, team is preparing a, an encampment proposal that outlines our three-year program to expend, uh, potentially up to three point four million dollars. It is in coordination with regional stakeholders, including our Garden Grove PD SRT team, the B-Well Mobile Response Team, the County of Orange, and Caltrans. Some of our proposed program activities include expanding our street outreach, and supportive programs, um, will enhance our data collection to include, um, data from individuals within the encampments that we will be assisting. We will augment some of our operations associated with our Future Navigation Center, and then, uh, we will, uh, recommending a proposed infrastructure program in coordination with Caltrans where we will install deterrent fencing at four highlighted encampment areas that's described in, in our staff report. Part of the, uh, fencing installation program will include a three-year maintenance program, one year for installation and two years for maintenance, that is included in our grant request. We are anticipating installing the fencing structure that is in line with Caltrans standards, and because we are following those standards, any subsequent maintenance will be absorbed by Caltrans via either Caltrans will maintain the fencing directly, or we will enter into a maintenance agreement where the city will be reimbursed for that maintenance cost. Again, our proposed budget is roughly three point four million dollars, expand, oh, just around three years. We anticipate the grant notification to be awarded sometime by the end of April, if not sooner. If successful, we will kick off the grant, um, administration, um, quickly, and it will be concluded by June of twenty-twenty-six. I first, um, also want to extend my thanks to the City Council. At our last budget cycle, you approved an additional position for the Community and Economic Development Department for Homeless Liaison Coordinator, and I would like to introduce, uh, Chrissy Lee, who is a homeless liaison person, and her first official day with the city will be tomorrow, right now she's under a contract staffing, uh, role with the city and our department. So part of her role is to continue to be aggressive in seeking grant funding to leverage, um, implementation of future homeless resources and programs, and that will be fall, that will fall under Chrissy's responsibility, including, um, overseeing the implementation of our navigation center, overseeing any additional resources that will come online. This concludes my staff report. Chrissy and I are available, she has delved very deep into this, uh, grant application that is roughly thirty pages long, and if you have any additional questions, we're here to answer that, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa Christie, go ahead, George.
Yeah, just, just one, um, are there any, uh, matching funds associated for these, this particular grant as far as the city has to provide matching funds for, you know, if we receive the grant?
There are no matching requirements for this particular grant.
Thank you.
Bethany?
Um, obviously, I think this is a fantastic opportunity, all of these areas, Beach in the twenty-two, Euclid in twenty-two, they're all highly trafficked, we all see on a day-to-day basis what's going on in those areas, and this should be, um, obviously this would be a very welcome and, and needed resource to help those highly impacted areas. I appreciate your answering of the questions that I had on, on the maintenance contract and what that will look like forecasting out, so thank you so much, and fingers crossed.
Any other questions, comments, or a motion?
Move it.
All to vote?
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. Takes on two ordinances presented for a second reading and adoption. Item 6A.
Item 6A is the second reading of ordinance number 2941 entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Approving Planned Unit Development Number PUD 018 2022 to Establish Residential Planned Unit Development Implementation Provisions and Standards of Development for Property Located at 9071, 9081, and 9091 Lamston Avenue. Assessor parcel numbers 133, 183, 55, 56, 57, and 58." And this is an action item.
Thank you. This is a second reading. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Call to vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All right. He takes us on two matters. We'll go around the horn from the outside in, starting with Mayor Protam George.
Yeah, just one item. Reminder, Sunday, February 26th, at Grease Monkey Garage, myself and Councilwoman Cindy Tran will be hosting a catalytic converter engraving event. You can drive in. And there's a little pit you're going to drive over. And there's a guy underneath there who engraves your catalytic converters with your license plate number. So if it does get stolen, theoretically, the police can track it if they come across it. And also the recycling folks aren't allowed to take them if they're engraved. So it kind of makes them useless to the thieves if they see they're engraved, you know. So with that being said, that'll be Sunday, February 26th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And we probably won't be going much past 1:00. So get there early. And it's free, no charge. Just drive in, show your driver's license that you are a Garden Grove resident. Doesn't matter if you're in First District, Sixth District, Fifth District. Last time I did it, we had lots of people from all over the city showed up. So just, just show that you live in the city of Garden Grove. That's all we care for. So with that being said, that's all I have.
John.
Thank you. A shout out to our firefighters out there. Recently, they went to a car accident, and the mother-daughter was on a weekend, and she was going to a basketball game. They weren't seriously injured, thank God. But the girl was just devastated because they were going to a cha, she's 11, was going to a championship basketball game, and was going to miss the game. Everything was okay. The site, OCFA threw her in the truck, lights and sirens, and they got to the game, and the mom and her got to do it. And, you know, I don't know if they won, but, but, but there was a comment here, there was a comment by OCFA, and they said, you know, being there for the team and being there for the community is the things that we take to heart at OCFA, which is your fire department, which is representing you. So they, they have a heart. You got a good or great organization over there of over 1,000 firefighters and an incredible staff and community over there that is thinking about our community when they're out there on the street. So when you see them, wave to them, say hello, thank you. And, and with that, Happy Valentine's Day, honey and everybody else. It's my wife and I's 38th Valentine's Day together. So, well, not right at the moment, but I'll be home shortly. Thanks.
Cindy.
I just want to take the opportunity to say thanks to Superintendent Gabrielle Mafia and Board Member Terry Roco, and the student from Rancho Alaminos for coming to the, visiting the elder event last month. So this is the picture. The student was so polite, and they were able to reach out to the elder, and they sang for them. So it was a great event. Just want to take the opportunity to say thanks to everyone for supporting and looking forward to this month event with Councilmember George. And next month, we're going to try to do something related to art with Councilmember Stephanie Copinson. That's it for me. Thank you. Happy Valentine's Day.
Kim, win.
A couple of comments. Earlier, we talked about commission appointments. And I know that this happens every single year that I've been elected, that we have to do appointments. We delayed and delay and delay because we struggle to get folks to appoint. At the last meeting, I talked about potentially looking into a temporary or a part-time additional staff person. And I'd like to expand that idea. I don't remember if I made this comment for our council retreat, so I'll say it now. But I, this council has often kind of shied away from focusing in on districts and focusing more on a citywide approach, which I understand. But I'm seeing more and more now the detriment that that has caused as far as engagement and involvement from our community members. I see other cities that are by districts that when they have events, they have a district table specific to that council member and that district with information, sign up so that those residents are getting specific newsletters catered to that district. And I think that that's something that we should be looking towards for the future, that we should be looking at having, you know, our own, I mean, it sucks because events usually don't happen in District 6. I don't have a park, I don't have a facility. I have a park, but we don't ever have events there. I don't have a huge facility. So a lot of our events happen east or west of Euclid, I'm sorry. But this is something we should be thinking about going towards the future as we do have the renovations happening at Woodbury Park. I'd love to see more programming happen there. And this is something where we could do that, where we'd have our tents, we'd have information specific to our district, we'd be able to staff that table with, maybe with an assistant of some kind, have a newsletter sign up, and then have that information created by an additional staff person that could send out information by that district and include citywide events. And that could be done by zip code. I know that folks sign up now for newsletters, so we can break that down by district and have that information catered. That would be really great. I think the other part of that is that it also helps foster engagement from our residents. If they're getting that information, they can pinpoint things that are important to them. And it also hopefully will launch into my very broken record comments about building out neighborhood associations by district. I know that this is a heavy lift for the city alone, but if we found partners to help establish that, that would be a great avenue for us to have more engagement. We have workshops and town halls and other meetings for really major projects that we're doing in the city, and they're usually not well attended. And so this is one way to bolster that as well. And I think that information can be disseminated about crime hotspots or homeless issues specific to that district. We all have our hubs, and we have specific things that are going on. We can have someone who's looking at data, who's looking at trends, burglaries within particular neighborhoods, so that neighborhood can be more alert. So there's a lot of ways that we can manipulate data to provide useful information to our residents, to encourage and engage them to be more a part of our, our government process. And I also made the comment to the city manager about having council videos or slideshow-type posts after a council meeting that includes the top highlights of the things that we've approved. So that information is getting out to our residents in a quick and timely manner, but in a way that's going to be quick and digestible to them and hopefully aesthetically pleasing. And so I want to make sure that as we look towards the future, I mean, I see the clock running out on my time here on Garden Grove City Council, and I want to make sure that we establish a new legacy moving forward where we are really focused on engagement from our community because that has been dwindling and has been a reoccurring issue from the time that I've been elected. No knocks on any of my colleagues, but I'm still the youngest person elected here, and I'm no longer 25, so it's not as cute as it was back in 2016. We have a lack of diversity on our, our commissions, a lack of, or massive gaps in age. And I think that we need to be more proactive about remedying that. So, and that comment there, and just a quick, a couple highlights for, for coming up events. On Thursday, the League will be having its general membership OC Division meeting from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at Irvine City Hall. This is open to all of my colleagues. I'm usually the only one that ever goes. Sometimes I can force the city manager to go. But please participate and come if you're able to. You should have received an email by Tony Cardenas, who was our outgoing manager for that division. We now have a new representative, but he should have sent out an email with all those details. And I'm sure the city clerk, between city clerk and our council liaison and the city manager, we can get that information to you tomorrow ASAP, so that you can add it to your calendars and attend. We also have baseball weekend coming up next weekend, and I cannot wait to see my adorable little nephew in his little gear, preparing for opening day. So I will be very distracted at the Garden Grove Pony. I'm sure Councilmember Klaufenstein will be there with me. And lastly, just want to wish a Happy Valentine's Day to my fiance. And that's it. Thank you.
Stephanie.
Briefly, I just wanted to make mention, I believe the meeting this evening will be closed in honor of Rick Lerma, a pillar, member of our community, a stalwart figure that gave himself generously and selflessly to this community for many, many years. I think for many of us, myself included, we're still reeling from this loss. But after his services, two days actually prior or after his services, we held a first annual Rick Lerma Memorial Blood Drive. It was held on February 9th here at the CMC. First, I want to make mention and thank the city and city staff for allowing the use of the CMC for that day. Everything was so beautifully organized and just ran like clockwork. And everyone was so accommodating. So I want to thank everyone for that. Patty Whitacombe McDonald's, Case Kitchen, countless volunteers from different civic organizations and the like, just all coming together to give back and honor the legacy and life of Rick Lerma. The American Red Cross was fabulous to work with as well. 50 pints of blood were collected, six Power Red donors, and 24 first-time donors for an impact of hopefully helping or saving over 150 lives. So it was definitely a success and something that we're all very proud of. And we hope to continue to do it year after year. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I do have a few items, but I'll try to be brief because it's getting long. We want to get back home, right, to our loved ones. But thank you, Cindy, for giving us roses and chocolates. It's a very special touch. I want to start with some good news. And I really appreciate all of our staff, but particularly tonight, I want to recognize our own Lisa Kim, who just won the Assistant City Manager Award throughout the whole state by the League of California Cities. I know that is a tremendous recognition, and we need to applaud you for that. Congratulations. That's a very big deal. And we're proud to have you in our city, and we do hope you stay. We know we're going to lose Scott. I look forward to his farewell party. I think it's February 28th. But until that day, I'm going to use him up. He's, he's still, it's still his watch, and I still expect him to run this city along with the mayor and city council. So tonight, another good news I have to share with the public. I won't release anything that's confidential. Never mind. Don't worry about that. But we have candidates. And I'm so happy that staff has pushed through for the internal recruitment. We have candidates. I can't say how many, and I don't know who. I haven't opened the envelope. But I'm sure all of us will be reviewing it tonight and looking into in the few, in the days and looking forward to the interviews when we are going to have some very, very worthy and respectable people to interview. And one of my interview questions that I submitted, and I'll let this cat out of the bag because I get to, is that I want to know how the city manager will run their departments under them, the heads of the department, how we can weigh in, and their staffing decisions. I am not a micromanager, but I expect the city to be well-run in all departments. And I do not want a situation where staff is derelicting duties. Derelicting duties, I mean not responsive, not answering to the requests for services from the residents, my constituents, and me included. I am a resident. I did not give up those rights. I did not give up my rights to be a business owner, business person in this city. I did not signed on for this job to give up my livelihood. I did sign on to agree not to engage in any conflict of interest activities, not the perceived conflict of interest, the real and actual conflict of interest, which is defined very clearly. And until I get those clarifications, I will continue to engage in business in this city because I have a business license to do that. Now, if staff is uncomfortable or not educated about how to work with their council members, then they need training. I went through training. I know what I'm doing. But if staff is pushing back and says, well, this is a red flag, this is a conflict of interest, I want the city manager and the city attorney to put together a do and don't list for electeds, and a can and cannot list for staff. Then we're clear. Then there's no confusion. This is not a legal issue. It's mostly a matter of principle and common sense. And I repeat, I will continue to conduct business activities in this city. That's my right to the pursuit of happiness. If I can't fight for my own rights, I can't fight for anybody's rights. And I'm here to fight for everyone's right in my jurisdiction and to the best of my abilities. So please respect that. What I mean is, when city issue correction notices and send out to the public that, hey, you got three days to respond, you got four days, you got five days, you got seven days to respond, and citations hanging over your head, then when you reach out to the city and city is not responding in kind, I have a problem with that. If you send out a notice that says, you need to respond to this in five days, then I expect city staff to respond when the residents are asking for services in the same matching timeframe. And that's one of the things I'm going to be looking for in the next city manager. How are you going to run your departments? Now, I give commendations to Scott because he's run it well. We have a surplus. Man, right? I look good. Everybody looks good. We have Patricia Song here, who's like, amazing what she does. But I don't want that surplus to evaporate. We're at a certain altitude. We don't want to start dropping an altitude. And I'm with George in protecting those pensions because when we sign on as a city for those very, very reputable people to work for us, we made them a promise. We're going to take care of them with the pension plans. We cannot neglect that. But we're going to visit that when we go into the budget conferences. But that is at the top priority. Let's take care of that. Make sure we don't lose the, the surplus that we have. But the next city manager and this council will have to maintain it and build on it so we're not spending ourselves into deficit like other cities. Lastly, I do want to recognize the people we lost. Charles Mitchell, he sat right there, right there, where there's no seats now. Front row, third from right, or fourth. Those were his seats. I come here when my wife was on council. I watch him speak. He was a wise old owl. Now, you can disagree with him, but he's always well-intentioned. And I think he helped the city a lot. Steve, you're kind of one of the last old guards here, no? Rick Lerma, I tried to go to his funeral. No parking. To his honor. No parking. I came, yeah, a little bit later than 1:00. St. Columbine was packed full. There's no street parking even. But I want to thank the safety personnels and our officers who provided some traffic control. It was amazing. Yeah, we blocked off certain parts, and we made sure the traffic was good for his funeral. And I, I couldn't, I couldn't park, so I had to take a view from the outside. But I paid my respects. I said prayers for him and his family. And I will say prayers for another person or OCFA Division Chief Ron Roberts. We lost him tragically. And I was ready, getting ready to interview him because he was referred to me on my Face Television Weekly Show from another person I interviewed, an officer, and he came highly recommended. I left messages on his cell phone. Never got an answer. And now I know why. And it was shocking. Not how you want to find out about somebody you were really looking forward to meeting and interviewing. I don't remember him. I haven't worked with him. But my wife, Deana Nguyen, did work with him. did work with him, remembered him very fondly, like she remembered Rick Lerma and Charles Mitchell. I had another person, another fireman from OCFA called me or left me a text message. I'm answering for Ron Roberts. So I take my hat off to OCFA. They don't miss a beat. They have the very high-quality officers and leaders. John O'Neil knows better than me who steps it up and takes care of us. So I've heard every hero have a hero. They're all heroes to me and I want to thank them tonight and celebrate the people that we lost. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council.
Thank you. City Manager Scott Stiles.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, just a couple items. One is you've heard me mention that we've been working with CalOptima on a street medicine program, one of a number of different initiatives. This morning, we had a, a good operational meeting on trying to kick off the program with both our staff, OCFA, Garden Grove, GGPD, BWLOC, Orange County Healthcare Agency and others. So they are gonna, we're arranging for the, the street medicine program to come before you at the next meeting, CalOptima, and give us a little update on the pilot program, where it's at, when they're trying to kick it off in April. So you're gonna get some more information about that. So we're excited about that. You know, we're, as I think council some time ago said, Scott, do everything and anything you can to try it. So we're trying to take a look at this. CalOptima is very excited about the program. So they're gonna talk to us, talk a lot about it, about it to us at the next meeting. Just a couple other quick things I wanted to mention. This coming Wednesday, we've talked a lot about ADUs and other things. So we're doing a significant ADU workshop for the community this Wednesday at 6:00 p.m. at the CMC. So anybody who's involved in building ADUs, working on ADUs, that sort of thing, staff is gonna do a workshop on that and share all the information that we can about that. Secondly, full speed ahead on our navigation center, the homeless shelter. The RFP is out there for the contractor who's gonna build out the facility and those bids are due by March 1st. And so shortly after that, we'll be able to select a contractor who's going to be able to build it and get it up and running before the end of the year. So that's, that's our goal. And then the last thing I wanted to mention, just bears repeating for Councilman John O'Neil in District 2, I think we should reiterate that February 25th, we're gonna have our second bulky pickup program. And I know Councilmember Tran was at the first meeting, the first event on the, on the 11th, and that went really well. And so we're gonna have the, the second one. Again, it's at Skylark Elementary, 11250 McMurray Street. And we had it there at that location last year, very successful. And then the community can go online. They can see when all the other drop-offs are coming at all of your districts and doing that. And the one last thing I'll mention is that, you know, they accept all bulky pickup items. What is not accepted is hazardous waste items, paint, oil, batteries, LED lights, that sort of thing. There's other avenues for you to take your bulky pickup. And again, this one will be in District 2, but residents from all over the city can come and, and do their drop-off. So that's all I have. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. General Counsel, any need for closed session or anything to report out?
No, counsel, no, Mayor, and we don't have any items for closed session or any, anything to report out. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it is with a heavy heart that tonight's meeting is being adjourned in memory of two people who have had the privilege of knowing, Rick Lerma and Ron Roberts. Rick was such a special person, a true pillar of the community. And as such, his sphere of influence was impressive. He gave of himself freely to all the things that were important to him, whether it was to his church, St. Columbine, serving as a board member, being a big brother to youths, serving on downtown commission, the Chamber of Commerce, the Garden Grove Police Advisory Board, the Garden Grove Strawberry Festival, and the Lions Club. He did all of this for the betterment of those around him. Just last year, he was named Garden Grove Man of the Year by the Cypress College Americana Award Foundation. I believe what kept Rick motivated and what was most important to him was his faith and his wife Susan and their kids Maria, Ricky, Jeffrey, Danielle, Nicole, Justin, David, Joshua, and Vincent. Rick's passing has left an empty space that this community will feel for a very long time to come. Rest in peace, Rick. Ron Roberts proved himself to be an exceptional leader who spent 42 years in service to the communities of Orange County, saving countless lives. He began his career as a reserve firefighter in Santa Ana. Then he was hired full-time to serve in Westminster, which became part of the Orange County Fire Authority in 1995. Ron's ability to stay calm in a moment of high tension was a high-value skill that led to opportunities for specialty positions, including helicopter crew chief and incident commander of the Orange County All-Hazard Incident Management Team. Chief Roberts will be remembered for his guidance with ushering in the change from the city's fire department to the Orange County Fire Authority, serving as Garden Grove's Division Chief up to his retirement in October of 2022. Chief Roberts was a trusted and beloved member of the Orange County Fire Authority family, who we had the privilege of benefiting from his service to Garden Grove. On behalf of the city council, I would like to offer my sincere condolences to his wife Stacy, his sons and grandchildren's, grandchildren and his colleagues. And with that, we will stand adjourned.